Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, April 7, 2020, and I'd like to call the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Counselor Squallia, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Thank you, Counselor Squallia. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
The following counselors have signed into this Zoom meeting and are present: President Kusmeric, Counselors Boishman, Kutcher, Deanna Tally, Fleming, Green, Schultz, Squallia, Van Hasinga, Walsh, and Zarella.
Wonderful. At this time, Counselors, Counselor Zarella, I believe that you were asking for a point of order.
Yes, a motion. I'd like to make a motion for suspension of the rules such that any of our council rules and regulations that are contrary to the governor's guidance on remote meeting participation shall be suspended until such time as isolation protocols are lifted.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk.
This will require a two-third vote. I'll start with Counselor Boishman.
Yay, yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
That is unanimous.
Excellent. Next, counselors, public forum. So as to the viewing public, I would like to assure you that we had public comment open and available via the city clerk's office for submission throughout up until the day today for folks to take now the city clerk's office or transcribe a not more than two minutes message via public comments. We have received three communications that I'm interpreting as as public comment, and I will read those three communications at this time to the council. The first this evening is from Josiah Richards. 199 Fisher Road, Pittsburgh, Mass. 0142. Dear Council, dear Pittsburgh City Council, I am writing to express my support for Resolution 9620, request that brokers, landlords, and real estate agents not show housing units that are currently occupied during COVID-19 pandemic. It goes without saying that we must minimize our interactions with other people during this unprecedented time. The only way to absolutely flatten the curve is to limit all nonessential work. Apartment and home showings are not essential for life, unlike food and medication. Right now, millions of Americans are without work or have reduced hours. This is also a time for brokers, real estate agents, and landlords whose very jobs depend on the interaction with other people. These interactions can wait, especially when showing an occupied home or apartment. Introducing new people to someone's living space while there is a highly infectious disease going around is not prudent. Frankly, it is dangerous, irresponsible, and reckless. While the resolution is nonbinding, it speaks volumes to professionals considering showing an occupied home to prospective buyers and renters. This is an opportunity for the city council and the city as a whole to show leadership and a level of seriousness as this highly contagious disease deserves. Many residents are looking for leadership and guidance, and we are not getting that from our highest levels of this country. Fortunately, we have strong leadership on Beacon Hill, and we will need strong leadership on Boulder Drive. We may not all agree on matters of politics, but we cannot afford to disagree on the severity of COVID-19 poses to our most vulnerable residents. Two of my family members now have COVID-19. They live relatively solitary lives, and the only way for them to have gotten the infection was from people entering their homes. So please consider the resolution not as a limitation on one's job, but as a resolution to save lives. Respectfully submitted, Josiah Richards. The next letter we have, counselors, bear with me one moment. This is from Rick Healy. It was sent earlier today. Rick Healy, president of Foster Healy Real Estate, Inc., 50 Central Street, Leominster, Mass. 01453. And it reads, "Michael, could you please share this with the council regarding the resolution on this evening's city council agenda? As realtors, we must share the city council's concern with the impacts of the coronavirus on our families, on our employees, and on our community. Housing affects people's physical health, their financial health, and their mental health. I am confident that this is why Governor Baker included us on his list of essential businesses. As we balance the needs of our clients, we are taking every precaution to utilize the best health practices to protect against the virus. To follow up on how real estate is being conducted in the current environment, being included on this list of essential businesses allows us to open our brick-and-mortar offices. Most of us have not done so. We are able to accomplish a great deal remotely and virtually. I am a director of MLS PIN. When and when checked a week ago, out of 40,000 agents, there were 11 open houses. Most were regularly weekly new construction ads that had not yet been eliminated. Both the Massachusetts Association of Realtors and MLS PIN were strongly discouraging open houses and stressing social distancing and best practices when personal meetings are necessary. I have attached a Pittsburgh listing that we are marketing to give you an idea of how we are handling it. This is a link to the Matterport tour of 487 Fisher Road in Pittsburgh. I have also attached a copy of the MLS listing where we include photos of every room. This listing, this listing information states that you, that prior to any person showing a COVID-19 form must be filled out and returned. I've attached a copy of that form. Counselor, I won't read the attachments on that email, but suffice it to say it was a checklist of the necessary requirements of both the buyer and and the agent, the prospective buyer and agent before entering the property. When when an in-person showing is requested, we have property under agreement for sale strictly based on virtual viewing. And when allowed by the homeowner, we follow the number of steps. We request the homeowner to vacate the property at the time of the showing. We ask that all the lights be turned on and that disaffecting wipes are available for rent to wipe any are available for the agents, excuse me, to wipe any surfaces or doorknobs that are touched. The agent showing the property meets the customer and conducts the showing, maintaining the appropriate social distances. Most are using masks and protective gloves. Contracts are being negotiated remotely using digital signatures and as are mortgage applications. Home inspections are being conducted by inspectors alone and communicated remotely, sometimes using FaceTime during inspection. Many banks are allowing drive-by appraisals rather than inspect interior inspections. Smoke and carbon monoxide inspections are now being allowed after closing and state after the closing in the state of emergency by buyers. Title insurance companies are offering gap insurance until the end of the emergency. If registries stop accepting remote recording, closings are being held with attorney meeting buyer and seller separately without agents and using social separation. Housing is a fundamental need, and in this environment, everyone, realtors, sellers, buyers, bankers, home inspectors, appraisers, and lawyers are making difficult decisions and making a concerted effort to be safe. It would be disappointing to have Pittsburgh City Council place a stigma on those who have made a difficult decision and taken those precautions. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Rick Healy, President. And our last communication, and counselors, I apologize. I'm reading a little bit slow. I've got multiple screens that I'm toggling between this evening. The last letter is submitted today by Nicholas Pelletier, Realtor at Keller Williams North Central. And the letter reads as follows, "Dear Counselor Kusmeric, the residents of the Commonwealth have a right to shelter by purchase or leasing a home or apartment. As a result, realtors and real estate professionals were deemed essential by Governor Charlie Baker on March 31. In order to preserve the safety of clients and also ensure the right to shelter safely is protected. Realtors and real estate professionals have been taking the utmost care, concern, and precaution to keep buyers, sellers, and renters safe, as well as other real estate professionals involved in the transaction. Leadership in the real estate industry has broadly communicated the following precautions and recommendations: Strict adherence to social distancing guidelines and rules, eliminating open houses wherever possible, using virtual tours whenever possible, listing agents using the 3D Matterport or video tours of home on listings, ensuring that buyers entering homes are qualified to purchase, ensuring that all clients are aware of the risks and procedures prior to entering any property or showing any property, and ensuring protective proper protective gear is worn during all showings. Housing is a basic necessity, which the governor's decision to make it as an essential business. As a basic necessity, residents should have the right to seek new or safer housing as they deem necessary. Similarly, as the largest assets of most homeowners, residents should be allowed to list and sell their properties as necessary to ensure their own financial security and well-being. I hope that these points help to clarify the importance of maintaining and functioning real estate industry and the Commonwealth and in Pittsburgh to meet the needs of the city. Sincerely, Nick Pelletier, Realtor at Keller Williams." So counselors, those into our viewing public, those were our three comments submitted for public forum this evening. Next, if there are no objections, we'll hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening. They took up the following matters. Reappointments for the Board of License Commissioner, term to expire May 1, 2026 of Mr. Dan Sarafield. Conservation Commission, term to expire on March 1, 2023 of Mr. Brian Brio. A new appointment for full-time student police officer Ryan Creedler that was held until May 18, when we were able to to send Mr. Creedler to the state, to the Police Academy. And lastly, Pittsburgh Cultural Council, term to expire April 1, 2023 of Ms. Leona Wettel. Each of the recommendations were voted on unanimously and passed in committee earlier this evening. The matter is now before the council.
Move to accept the committee's report?
A second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the committee's report. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next, we have communications from His Honor, the mayor. The following, the following letters of appointments have been sent to us for Pittsburgh State University Police Officers, as special police officers for the city of Pittsburgh, for Emily J. Ramos, William T. Bonsgaard, Jonathan A. Francis, Nicholas J. McLaughlin, Cameron McCusker. Those stand referred to the Appointments Committee, which will be held on April 20. Next, we've received two communications from department heads. The first I'll read is from Chief Roy. We received this earlier today, counselors, to Counselor Kusmeric from Kevin D. Roy regarding fire department operational preparedness. Hello, Counselor, we'd like to update the council on the current status of Pittsburgh Fire's response to COVID-19 pandemic to date. Our Pittsburgh, our fire EMS services have been staffed at minimum levels since the onset of the pandemic. All protocols have been reviewed and updated as necessary. Additional PPE and disaffecting supplies have been ordered and most received. Our firefighters have reported to duty and have always performed their duties with dedication and professionalism. In addition, our Pittsburgh Management Division has been working closely with all applicable state and federal agencies, as well as helping other city departments and some private organizations in this city. Additionally, I am in daily contact with other department heads, the mayor's staff, the Pittsburgh Fire Union officials, and many other groups and citizens requesting our assistance. If you need further information regarding these issues, please contact me. Sincerely, Kevin D. Roy, Chief of Fire Department. We also received an additional communication from, we received this earlier today, to Council President Michael Kusmeric from Ernest Bardno, Chief of Police, dated April 6, 2020 regarding operational preparedness. "Good evening, counselors. I have been asked to give a brief operators, operational preparedness update for the Pittsburgh Police Department. Since the very onset of this pandemic, the department has been working on the operational needs and the potential redeployment of our workforce. My top priority from the very beginning has been the response of our patrol division to emergency calls. Like many other law enforcement agencies in the Commonwealth, staffing our uniform division has been challenging at times. However, the men and women of FPD have accepted this challenge and have gone above and beyond the call of duty during this time in crisis, a crisis. Our patrol division is fully staffed at this time with several operational plans already in place should staffing be impacted due to health-related absences. Equally important to staffing, our patrol division is properly maintaining our emergency dispatch center at full strength. For many citizens at this time of crisis, their only lifeline is an emergency call to the police, and for that reason, operational plans are in place to deal with any potential staff reductions at the dispatch center. Finally, I am in daily contact with my public safety partner, Kevin Roy, as well as other city leaders. In addition to our local leaders, I am in constant contact with our partners at Pittsburgh State University Police Department and Massachusetts State Police. Residents of Pittsburgh can be assured that the Pittsburgh Police Department is committed to preparing and is committed and prepared to keeping our community safe. Respectfully submitted, Ernest Bardno, Chief of Police." Next, on the agenda this evening is a report from our committee on records. Counselor Squallia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Counselors, the matter is before the body.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
That would be a yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yay.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Counselor Zarella, I'm just now noticing you had typed a comment. Are you all set?
Yes, that was relative to the.
The communications.
Yeah, the communications.
Thank you. Next, counselors, we have Orders Finance. We have four such matters before us this evening, all with a request for suspension of the rules. What I would ask is at this time that we entertain a motion for suspension of the rules on all of the matters, and we'll take individually.
Second.
Second.
I, that said, I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 09120 up to and including 09420. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous motion carries. We now have four matters before this body. I'll read each, and then we can, we can take them in order. 09120, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Public Health Sustainability Revolving Fund authorized by city ordinance up to the amount available in the fund, or $700,000, whichever is less. The matter is now before the body.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 09120. Speaking on the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
It is unanimous.
Next, counselors, we have 09220, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Enterprise Bank grant in the approximate amount of $5,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to provide grants to small businesses during the current emergency.
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion and second to accept 0920. Speaking on the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next, we have 09320, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approve the expenditure of funds from the State Executive Office of Public Safety Grant in the approximate amount of $1,764 for the purpose of said grant, which is to maintain the regional fire safe, safety house used in teaching fire safety.
Motion to approve.
Matter is now before the body.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Speaking on the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yay.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next is 09420, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass Development Brownfield Redevelopment Fund in the approximate amount of $67,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is for site remediation at 80 Lunenburg Street. The matter is now before the body.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion.
On the motion?
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman, please hold on one moment. Counselor Boishman, you have the floor.
I just got one question I asked you earlier. I just want to make sure what we don't have to pay back that $67,000 on the, on the grant?
Counselor, to the best of my knowledge, this is, this is truly a grant and funds that we have received do not have to be repaid to this granting organization. That said, you still have the floor. I'm unmuting you now.
Oh, that's okay. I'll vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Please enter so in the chat box. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Unanimous.
Next, we have Orders Other. Counselors, I would ask for suspension of the rules on 090520. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yay.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz. Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
It is unanimous.
09520, order that the Honorable Mayor Stephen L. Deanna Tally is hereby authorized on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to execute and accept the agreement between the city and Massachusetts Water Waste Water Agency Response Network and to authorize all other acts and to sign any additional documents which will be necessary, helpful, or convenient to ensure membership and M-A-W-A-R-N and to perform under the terms of the agreement. The matter is now before this body.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Next, counselors, we have 099 and 120, which stand referred to the City Property Committee. Counselor, that actually does not require a motion as it would, as it stands referred to the committee unless otherwise, unless otherwise modified.
May, may I ask a question?
Counselor.
May I ask that we send this to zoning too? So we can get the results because there's questions on here that I, I like to ask about.
Of both matters, Counselor, or just?
Yes, on both matters.
So Counselor Boishman is requesting that in addition to city property, they be also sent to the ZBA. Is that in the form of a motion, Counselor?
Yes, yes, it is. I make a motion.
I have a motion and second, I will acknowledge Counselor Zarella speaking on the motion. Counselor, give me one moment here. Counselor Zarella, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to note that this motion would be in the nature of a suspension of the rules due to our rules stating that matters that pertain to the jurisdiction of a committee are referred to that committee. That being said, I would be opposed to this motion. I'm on the zoning board. We simply don't have advisory authority. We have no statutory authorization to take up a matter to give opinions and advice on it. We would have, we would get this issue in front of us only once the owner or petitioner requests a permit or requests some matter to come before the board that we actually have jurisdiction to decide. It's not a committee.
Thank you, Counselor. That said, counselors, I, so the motion would be an invalid motion at this time. What would be allowed is a motion for suspension of the rules, which would not be debatable, though, counselors.
I would make a motion that we send it to city property and also request that the building commissioner attend the city property meeting to be able to answer any of our counselors' questions.
So Counselor, we could certainly ask the City Property Committee, so a motion, I guess the only motion that would be allowed right now would be a suspension of the rules to modify its standing in referral to the committee. That said, I will make a request of the Chair of the City Property Committee work with the relevant department heads and city resources to be present at the meeting to answer any relevant questions on these matters.
Okay, sounds good.
Next, counselors, we have Resolutions. 09620, Resolution that the Pittsburgh City Council requests that brokers, landlords, and real estate agents not show housing units with current occupants during the COVID-19 pandemic. Counselors, so both this resolution and the next one of this, however, they were not formatted as resolutions that would allow us to to act on this. So counselors, I just want to make you aware that, you know, our, our options would be fairly limited in that we couldn't accept these tonight. We'd have to further either flush these out in committee, or they could be, or they could be acted on in another way. Simply accepting would not be in the proper format of a, of a resolution that we could accept. That said, I would entertain now a motion for suspension of the rules on the 09620.
No motion.
Okay, I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 09620. Madam Clerk.
President Kusmeric.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasinga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
So counselors, the matter is now before you. So, counselors, the matter is now before you, uh, speaking, uh, first on the, um, on the matter, Counselor Squallia.
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I like this resolution requesting, uh, from, you know, the city council that landlords and real estate agents not bring current, bring new people into current occupants homes. I think from the communication that we've received from Rick Healy and Nicholas Pelletier, you can see that they are promoting best practices regardless. Um, but, you know, just as a further kind of resolution, just that during this time, uh, when social distancing is paramount to personal safety, landlords and property owners and real estate agents are asked to avoid bringing potential tenants or others into residents' homes and cease any non-emergency work to avoid unnecessary risk during this state of emergency COVID-19 pandemic. Property owners showing units are requested to utilize images and videos from the occupants in order to show units virtually or to show similar vacant units instead if available. That's the intention of this resolution. Thank you. So, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, ninety-six twenty?
So, I have a, uh, a motion. Uh, do I have a second to approve? Counselor, I do not, uh, the motion, uh, the motion would, there is no second to move forward with your motion.
Motion for leave to withdraw?
Second.
I have a motion and second for leave to withdraw. Speaking on the motion, uh, counselors, I will, uh, move to our next on our speakers list. Um, speaking to the motion of giving leave to withdraw to zero ninety-six twenty, Counselor Walsh, give me one moment. Counselor Walsh, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I think that this resolution is unnecessary in light of what, uh, the communications that we've had from Mr. Healy and Mr. Pelletier. Um, I think that they're doing everything possible that they can to make sure that they're serving their, um, clients as well as the COVID-19 restrictions. I think the people who are, um, meant to be protected by this, people who are needing housing at this critical time, would be the people who would be harmed by this resolution. And therefore, I, I would like to have the, the resolution withdrawn. Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Zarella. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Counselor Walsh and also I'd like to simply add that I feel this resolution would send a signal that we don't trust, uh, our real estate professionals to make sound choices regarding this pandemic. It's clear that they are making every effort to minimize contact in every way possible. If for some reason they were to decide to do an in-person showing of an occupied house, uh, not only have they said that they would ask the homeowner to vacate before showing, but also I feel that we can be confident that if they were to choose to do so, it would be because there was some strong need to do so, whether it be a buyer who is without housing or a seller who needs to make the sale in order to, uh, continue to afford necessities. Uh, I don't think they're going to be doing so out of any sort of cynical profit motive at this point in time. Um, and I think that more broadly, it's one thing for the council to pass a resolution stating our opinion on the behavior of a large organization such as UMass Memorial, as we did recently. It feels very different to me for us as a council to be putting pressure on individuals in the community to behave in ways that we feel are appropriate. Uh, I simply don't see it as our role to do so, even though I certainly agree that I hope realtors will continue to use all appropriate precautions. That's me as Anthony Zarella, not me as member of the Pittsburgh City Council, because that's not what I was elected for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we have Counselor Kucher.
Yes, thank you.
You now have the floor.
Thank you so much. Uh, this is completely unnecessary. Um, as an attorney, as well as a Realtor myself, although I don't do any Realty work, um, the courts are still requiring attorneys to work amongst each other to try to resolve such as divorces and things like that, to resolve some of these issues while the courts are, are basically shut down. They haven't shut down completely yet. They're only hearing emergency motions. And I think that this resolution would basically fly in the face of any order of the probate court. So I would not be in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor Kucher. Next, uh, we have Counselor Fleming. The floor is yours.
Well, I think every other counselor has echoed my sentiments and with that being said, I probably do not need to add any more other than I think the professionals know what they should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing, and I rely on them to make the right decisions.
Thank you, Counselor Fleming. Next, we have Counselor Dina Tally. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. That, this being a resolution, this is non-binding, right?
This is correct, sir. This is non-binding.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we, we passed this. It, it doesn't mean anything. I, I mean, it sends some kind of a message, I guess, but it, the Realtors Association, Realtors, landlords, they can continue to do what they want to do. Um, you know, something like this, if it would rise to that level of concern, I would expect the governor's office to be on top of it, considering the fact that he did assign this in his office team as a essential business. So, I mean, when I look at resolutions in general, them being non-binding with no legislative, you know, teeth behind it, I mean, I ask myself, is, i- i- is it more feel-good? And that's what it feels like here. Um, so that's just my opinion. I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dina Tally. Counselor Green, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Um, again, I would not support this resolution binding or not binding because I think that, um, it goes against everything that we as counselors should be representing to our constituents and to this community, that it is not our business to micromanage private businesses. Um, so with that being said, I would not and will not support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Next, uh, Counselor Van Hasenga, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, in evaluating this issue, I think it's important to consider that, like has been said, that, uh, the sale and purchase of real estate has been deemed an essential activity. And it's an activity that people don't, can't necessarily wait and delay till another time. So it has to take place. Uh, we've had, we've heard, um, enough testimony is the right word, but, uh, from militaries who are undertaking the appropriate precautions to minimize the risk as little as possible. And the most important thing, if someone is considering selling their home is concerned, is concerned about people visiting to, to see the property, they don't have to allow that. It's up to them who they let into their house, whether they're selling the home or not. So I don't think this has much use or much validity, and I, I would urge everybody to vote against it.
So, uh, counselors, you know, I, I don't think this was filed with any malicious intent to hurt, uh, anyone and, and rather, I, I assume that the intent here was to protect a particular, um, vulnerable population. Uh, that said, I, I look at this, uh, and say that it could end up having malicious consequences towards the very people, uh, that this was meant to help and protect. You know, the, the governor declared this, um, the real estate, um, industry is essential for a reason. Uh, this would contradict, uh, the governor's rationale and governor's action here, which I think would, would confuse both the public and the industry itself as to who they should be following and listening to the governor or the municipality that they're operating in. But I would say and suggest, uh, as, uh, two of the real estate, um, uh, agents and many other counselors have alluded to, which is that, you know, some of the most vulnerable in our society and our community right now are those who are looking, um, for properties and seeking to move. Uh, most people aren't doing so because they want to. They're doing so because they have to for one reason or another. Think of, uh, individuals in cases of restraining orders, divorce, uh, financial concerns and considerations, uh, personal health, um, and family considerations that may require them to move or relocate. Uh, and I don't think, uh, the vast majority of, of folks that are, uh, that are selling, uh, or having to show up, uh, properties at this point are, are doing so, uh, just for the sheer joy of it. Uh, it, it's happening out of necessity. And, uh, housing is a basic human right and it's a human necessity. And I think in many cases, our real estate agents are trying to ensure that everyone has, uh, adequate, uh, and safe access to, uh, to housing. And so, uh, with that, I, you know, I think, I, I, I contacted the mayor's office, uh, and have, uh, have heard that there have been, uh, no, uh, incidents reported, uh, of concerns tenants to, um, the mayor's office or any of the administration, uh, any members of the mayor's administration or department heads. Um, and, you know, even if there were concerns, and, and certainly I think we can, we can certainly do our best to, to share this notice that, you know, Massachusetts allows in, in its leases, um, and occupants, uh, to have reasonable notice, uh, prior to, uh, to a house, a property being shown. So if you were living in an apartment and your property owner was, uh, requiring that a property be shown, uh, you would be entitled to reasonable notice. Uh, and I believe reasonable notice, um, in, in both our courts, uh, and by our attorneys, uh, both on this, in this body and those who work in this field, would argue that, uh, during a state of, uh, an emergency, reasonable request is not 24 hours, but in fact, at the end of, um, at the end of this emergency, uh, because folks cannot be evicted or, um, or moved out based on financial considerations during this time. So I would suggest that renters, uh, are, are indeed protected during this time. So I think they have the adequate, uh, protections in place. Certainly, I think we can, we can try to make sure that they're, um, they're aware, uh, of that information. But, uh, ultimately, I look and say those most vulnerable, uh, are being helped, uh, by our real estate, uh, professionals at this time. Therefore, uh, I will not, uh, be voting in support of this. Counselor Schultz, you now have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to end the debate.
Uh, Counselor, you are the last on the speaking list, therefore I have a, um, I have a motion and second already. And Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call, uh, to give leave to withdraw to zero ninety-six twenty?
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Nay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yay.
That would be ten to one.
Motion carries by margin of ten to one. Uh, next, we have zero ninety-seven twenty, resolution that the city's administration update the council on the city's disaster preparedness assessment for emergencies during this pandemic and impact of a potential reduction of our first responder workforce. Uh, first, we have, excuse me, counselors. First to speak, uh, to this, Counselor Dina Tally, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I will, uh, defer to the, uh, counselor who submitted the resolution.
Understood. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Squallia, you have the floor.
Yes, um, I appreciate getting the correspondence from the police chief and the fire chief. Um, you know, these are, this is a, this is a different time that we've ever, that we've ever experienced. Um, you know, the, the, we need to start thinking, um, about, um, how things are going to change in a week, how things are going to change in a month and two months. Um, and, you know, we, all around, uh, the world and in Massachusetts itself, we're seeing, um, potential curfews. We're seeing potential bans of a necessary travel, stay-at-home orders. You know, right now, we have groups of people in excess of ten, um, but, uh, some places are lowering that, um, around the world. Um, so I'd like to see just what, how are we going to be enforcing these measures in the city, um, for one part of our, uh, disaster preparedness assessment, um, and just all the other kind of unknowns that, you know, we haven't addressed yet. Well, you know, just, um, do we have a disaster preparedness plan? How are we preparing, um, to respond to what's going to happen, you know, so that we can be proactive instead of reactive? I know we, we follow the state, but I would like Pittsburgh to also, you know, start thinking ahead as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I apologize. I jumped, uh, Counselor, uh, Zarella's request first. That said, he has graciously, uh, yielded to Counselor Dina Tally. Uh, so following Counselor Dina Tally, we'll have, um, uh, Counselor Zarella, then Counselor Walsh. Uh, if I've missed anyone else, please make sure you've added that into the, the chat box. Counselor Dina Tally, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I don't understand the need for a resolution here. Um, I, I understand and hear very clearly what the motivation is behind this, but when I read it yesterday and I, I, I'm, I'm listening to it now, I, I mean, my thought has always been, any one of us, through you, Mr. President, can request this kind of information from the administration. It would have to come from the administration, uh, in consultation with, uh, his public safety personnel. But i- it's a simple request for information that, um, can be brought through you, sir, to, to the mayor's office or asked directly of the mayor. I don't understand the need for a resolution, um, whatsoever. And, uh, about being proactive and, and being prepared, you know, the, the mayor and, and the, the police chief, fire chief, um, our emergency management director, uh, Lieutenant Librotory, um, they're working around the clock as is the Board of Health on all, uh, measures of preparedness. Now, in terms of getting an understanding for the council's perspective, what that entails, I think that's just a simple letter to you, Mr. President, to request that the mayor's office provide the information any one of us are seeking or send a message directly to the mayor's office for that information. I don't really understand the need for a resolution. Um, I know in the past, when I have requested, um, someone come to the council to speak or pro- or provide us with information like what is being requested, it's just a simple email to you or directly to the administration's office for that information. And so, um, I'm not opposed to getting information like this. I'm just, I don't understand the need for a resolution. I, I don't think we need to file resolutions to get information like this that you can get simply through your, your chair. Um, that's just my opinion. So be- because of that, I'm not going to support the resolution because I don't really see it to be necessary. We can obtain this information through the normal channels without having to go through this kind of process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, next, I apologize. I skipped over. Uh, it is, uh, it will be Counselor Green, uh, then Counselor Zarella, and then Counselor Walsh. Counselor Green, you have the floor. I believe we just dropped, uh, we just lost Counselor Green. We'll move, uh, next, uh, to Counselor Zarella and is, when she, uh, when she returns, uh, she will have the floor. Counselor Zarella.
Thank you. Uh, first, just again, I feel it comes partly down to trust. Uh, I trust that the administration is already doing the things that need to be done to be prepared for this. We've been getting regular updates and I've seen no cause to believe that they don't have a handle on it. Uh, but more importantly, again, it goes to the identity of this body. As a total body, we, the council, are the legislature. Staffing levels, uh, emergency preparedness, those are quintessentially executive functions. Um, and we are not a junior varsity executive. It's not our role to backstop the mayor's executive performance. Uh, we have funding authority. We have legislative authority. But unless something gets to the point where we think that the administration is doing such a horrible job that we need to pass legislation to change the way things are handled, then any of this information gathering is essentially our secondary function as individuals. is essentially our secondary function as individuals, community liaisons. But that's something to be done as individuals on our own time, gather information and present it to our constituents. As a legislative body, it's not really our role to check up on the mayor and sort of see that he's doing an appropriate job. I trust that he is, and so I will not be supporting this motion either. Or this, or there isn't a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Zarella. Next, Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. Just like we've seen with communications from our department heads tonight, I would like to think that that would continue during this crisis, and it will be a crisis for a while. It's new territory for us. We're all learning something new on how to communicate, not only with each other, but through these live Zoom telecasts. And any information that I requested, not only for my own information, but for our community, has been given to me. So I don't see that there's a lack of information in the feed. If you want information, ask for it, and it shall be provided. Also, I'm not a big fan of getting to the real nitty gritty on what our public safety department, MEMA, FEMA, our own police force, what their plan is. I really don't think that that information should or could be shared with the public at this time, especially if it results in shift changing or personnel. I, I want us to operate as we've been operating right duly along with keeping this community safe and informed. So I will not be supporting this resolution because I think we're doing a good job with communication. I think we're being utmost transparent at this point. And I think if there's any information that you think that you're not getting, reach out and ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Next, we have Counselor Walsh. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo the sentiments of the counselors who have spoken before me, Counselors Dina Tally, Zarella, and Green. And I also don't believe that there's a purpose for this resolution. It has, it has no effect whatsoever. And for another reason is that I think that the mayor's office has done an amazing job of letting the public know and including, you know, city counselors in that, that public, letting us all know what is going on from day to day. And I know from reading the letters from the chiefs of police and fire department that they are in constant communication with them. I don't really see the, the need for this resolution, resolution, and therefore I would be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Next, we have Counselor Kuchar. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This resolution is not necessary. Just this past weekend, I ran into Chief Martino at the city landfill. And, you know, I was able to ask him, he was, you know, upfront with me about what was going on within his department. All you have to do is just approach the department head and ask him the questions that you want. Completely unnecessary. I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Kuchar. We have Counselor Dina Tally speaking for the second time. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In this time of emergency, obviously, information is, is necessary and fruitful for people to get confidence in the government that they are under. And I have witnessed in the last several weeks during this pandemic that there is, there is this constant need for information up to date every hour of the day. And sometimes information comes later than people would like because there are channels that have to be navigated in order to give people the most accurate information. Because unfortunately, with a lot of things going on right now, we are at the behest of the federal and state authorities. So if the, if the city is not providing information in a timely fashion, that's subjective. All information that is necessary to be seen has been provided just by evidence of the fact that the administration has held eight or nine televised appearances on FATV. The school department has held almost the same number of televised appearances, and both appearances were translated in Spanish. Press releases have gone out. You look at the city's social media page, the mayor's social media page, it's constantly being updated. So I, I just didn't say this in my first statement, that not only do I find the resolution unnecessary, I have confidence in our public safety personnel in the mayor's office that they are doing what needs to be done. And, you know, I talked to the mayor multiple times a day and, you know, every morning he tells me he's on an eight or nine o'clock phone call, and some, sometimes those calls go on for hours with everybody in the city, including Director Steve Curry from the Board of, from the, from Public Health, who has been fantastic. So as Counselor Kuchar said, Counselor Zarella, others, if I've ever needed any answers from any one of these gentlemen or ladies, I, I got them immediately. So, and when I get that information, one of the questions I ask, because it's very important, is can this be public? Because sometimes information is too sensitive to bring to the public, not because they can't know, not because we're trying to keep things secretive, but because of, again, the channels it goes through and what we can and cannot share. So I always ask if we can share this. And 99% of the time, the answer is yes, but I just want to make sure. So again, if any one of us like to have something like this that's even made in a public setting, go through you, Mr. President, to request that. Whether through a special presentation or just a letter submitted like we got today. And, and that's it. These resolutions are not necessary in that, that respect. Thank you. I make a motion that we give the resolution leave to withdraw.
I have Counselor Zarella, who has made same, asked to make the same motion. So I have a motion and second. Counselors, speaking on the motion, I have motion and second to give leave to withdraw to, excuse me, 09720. Speaking to the motion, I just want to add, you know, similar to what has been stated to this point, you know, I think our mayor has truly been on the forefront of, of this in terms of transparency, coordinating public responses and coordinating, you know, emergency preparedness. You see in a lot of other cities and towns, really, really flounder in this, in this zone. And our mayor was the first to really, particularly in our region, but, but really across the Commonwealth, to take immediate action and be transparent about how that decision was made and what factors influenced that decision making. We see routine updates, as has been talked about on FATV, the website and social media through, through the city's proper channels. And so when the council, in my view, when the council is asking for additional information, it's not just for us to have an inside knowledge of what's happening, it's in order for us to make a better informed decision on what is in front of us. In this case, I look and say, there's nothing in front of us that requires us to have additional information beyond what the mayor has already provided to us. He has provided us everything we need to do our, our position and our jobs well, and for the public to be informed. So that's the lens through which I evaluate that decision, and I feel that the mayor has, has met all of the needs for me as a counselor. You know, I, I was I was a little bit surprised to see this resolution, quite frankly, because I've been coordinating with both the mayor, the chief of staff, and the public safety departments on releasing some of this information. And it was already in queue. So the press releases that were sent out earlier today were talked about over a week ago, about how best to disseminate some of this information. And so it was a bit of a surprise to me because it was already in queue, and I think we could have could have certainly spared this, ourselves, this, this item on the agenda. But I'd also suggest that, you know, and I don't like always having that battlefield or trench mentality of, you know, of people who are in the, the act of making decisions shouldn't be questioned, but at the same time, we're in a crisis. And we have a mayor and a chief executive who tasked with guiding us through this crisis. And every time we have additional requests for information means that he, he himself, or an essential member of the staff, have to be pulled off the job to inform us. And so when we ask a question, I would say, for what purpose is it? What essential purpose is that feeling that requires us to do our job or do it better? And I would say that we've been given the information, as is the public, for what, for what we all need. And, you know, I really don't like distracting from the core function at hand, which is that our mayor, our chief of police, and our chief of fire, as well as water and wastewater. And there was a reason, this was part of that coordinated effort that I spoke about earlier, of putting that in front of this body this evening. That's, that's yet another contingency plan around staffing levels. It takes essential services offhand and makes them, devote them to communicating with us. So with that, I will certainly not be voting in support of this, and I'll just thank the mayor for the coordinated communication that he's had through FATV with our community and his continuing contribution to do so. That said, I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Counselor Kuchar.
No. Yes, yes, to withdraw. Sorry.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Thank you, Fleming. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yay.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Nay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
That is 10 to 1.
We have petitions. 09820, Comcast to request a grant of location to install a new conduit to provide service to a number, to number 1, 1,200 John Fitch Highway. This was initially tasked to be sent to a public hearing on May 5. Counselors, I'd ask instead that we, we send this to a public hearing on May 19, just giving us a little bit of a buffer between when the governor has when the governor has lifted the shelter in place order and, and when this public hearing would occur. That said, Counselor Zarella, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd actually suggest, or I'd move that we simply hold this matter for a few meetings because we're well within the window to schedule a public hearing. And that way, rather than scheduling it for May 19, and then finding out that we're still on lockdown on May 19, if it gets near the end of April and we're not done lockdown yet, and it looks like we won't be by then, we can set it for a later date. Whereas if we get near the end of April and it is clear that we're going to be back in business by May 19, then we can schedule it at that point and still have plenty of time for notice and publication and so forth.
So Counselor, before, and I do know I have another counselor in queue looking to speak, I would just suggest that if we hit that May 5, you know, if we were to push this out, my contention here would be that at some point, some, you know, we'll have to learn and we'll have to change our protocols to incorporate public hearings into, into our meeting. So I'd suggest that if, if we're if we're unable to meet in person again and resume normal council meetings by, say, May 19, it would be my intent that we have adopted a technological solution to allow for the public hearing to proceed in accordance with Secretary of State guidelines. That said, Counselor, you made a motion. If you'd like to to continue with your motion, I will entertain that at this time.
I would like to withdraw that motion prior to receiving a second. Which requires
That said, Counsel. Counselors, I apologize. The joys of technology. Counselor Zarella, I'm not sure how much you heard. In summary, I was suggesting that we'll have to adopt a public, a technological solution. Okay. That said, Counselor, would you like to proceed with the, with a motion, or can I defer to Counselor Squalia to now speak?
Counselor Zarella withdrew his motion prior to the second.
Thank you, Counselor Squalia. The floor is yours.
Yes, so I was just gonna say what you did, President Kuschmerich, that I believe that we shouldn't lengthen this, I think, if, if by May 19, that we do not have, I think by name, May, I don't think by May 5, if this is still occurring, that we could find a way to host a public hearing on a forum like this. So I would suggest that we put, move this to a public hearing for May 19.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 09820 to a public hearing on May 5, 2020.
19.
Thank you. May 19, 2020, speaking on the motion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, excellent. So Counselors, I would just, I'd like to thank both you and the viewing public. This is new technology for many, and this is certainly a new form for us to meet in. And I think it went very smoothly tonight, but I realize there are some, you know, some small things, and it's, it's been difficult as well to get public comment from, from the public in real time, and we're, we're working with FATV and the city clerk's office. And we certainly hope to be able to institute a technological solution over the next several weeks to, to be able to offer an additional method for real time participation through public forum. So that is my commitment to both this body and, and to the public. And, you know, certainly there are things that we will refine and processes that will refine for holding this meeting in this format, and certainly will, will work to continue to make this a better experience for both you as a body and for the public. So thank you for your patience. With that said, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming, I'm sorry, Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Fleming.
Yay.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yay.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yay.
Counselor Boishman.
I hate to leave.
Counselor Kuchar. And Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
It is unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.